It is 9:01. I will call this meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We will be abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended, a copy of which is at the entrance to this room. At 9:15, we will also be meeting as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, also abiding by the Open Meetings Act. First item on our agenda is open with prayers. Would you please join me? Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day and for the beautiful growing crops. The crops in the range land look beautiful. We thank you for this upcoming holiday that we may all celebrate the celebration of this nation. In that note, thank you for the many blessings we enjoy and the many freedoms that we get to live with. Look after those less fortunate than ourselves, such that they may seek guidance in the comfort of your word. After the military, all the folks that are in the uniform and across around the globe, law enforcement and the first responders that keep us safe and secure. Look after this group as we conduct our business today. Guide us in the decisions that we make in regards to the benefit of our constituents. In things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 Next item is approve of minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on June 26, 2023.
Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held June 26, 2023.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Brans.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Next item is to consider the following. First would be claims and treasurer's receipts.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the claims and treasurer's receipts as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Luler.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Brans.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Next item to consider is setting a date to receive bids for a multi-use building for Region 51 Emergency Management and other county offices. We have Brandon here.
Not necessarily.
Tyler, how much time do we need?
Two weeks at least.
Two weeks at least. So this being the third, we need to either choose the 17th or 24th.
I'll go with 24th.
Let's give a little extra time, huh?
A little extra, yeah.
I agree.
Melissa, where would that fit into your schedule on the 24th of July? What time slot would you like us to choose?
I'm guessing 10.
10 seems to be a popular.
Why not write it 9:30?
9:30?
Does that work?
Yes, we'll do that.
We'll change it up.
Do we need a resolution or a motion or a fact?
Chairman, I would move to set 9:30 on July 24th for the receiving and consideration of bids for the multi-use building for Region 51 Emergency Management and other county offices.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Brans.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff. Aye. Okay, next item to consider is authorizing the chairman to sign an agreement with the City of North Platte to discharge well water into the city's storm sewer system from the geothermal well.
Chairman, I would move to authorize your signature on an agreement with the City of North Platte to authorize or to discharge well water to the city's storm system for the geothermal well.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? How long will this be in effect? Joe, do you have any idea?
No, it's, let's just get past, I don't know.
Do we have an original over there for the agreement? Agreement between Lincoln County and the City of North, I think I should probably say North Platte.
Oh, next line now. It's very nice that the City of North Platte is willing to work with us on this.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Brans.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Joe, thank you for working on that.
Okay, that's that back door there. Great. Okay. Next would be to authorize the chairman to sign the right-of-way permit submitted by McCook Public Power District. This looks for a Phase 1 grade line. Looks like they're going to bore across the county road. Is that correct, Jason?
Yes, correct.
And you're okay with you've spoken with them?
Yep.
Looks like this is down in...
South of Brady?
Yeah, down there where we've got a lot of winding roads, a lot of trees, and a lot of cows.
God's country.
Lot of deer and some elk. And a mountain lion or two.
It's just the one crossing across the road, the borer.
Looks like it, just one borer.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion authorizing you to sign the right-of-way permit in McCook Public Power District.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Assuming they have the check.
And I do have a check here, and it's approved by Rhodes Department. Everything seems to be in order. Did we, we had a motion and a second, correct?
Correct.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Luler.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Brans.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Send that back over to Ms. Melissa.
What do you need, Joe?
I have some burnout ones.
Melissa, there's some in that right drawer.
There you go.
Oh, okay.
I'm gonna need another one, too. Thank you.
You're looking a little weak there. Well, you got plenty of stuff, don't you?
Yeah. I feel like there should be more in there. I checked it. Oh, that's black. Chris, just so you know, when my signature gets over there, Melissa just gave me a blueprint and it's black.
You're gonna start seeing me twitch.
Oh, this one has black. Chris has a thing about blue.
I have a thing about blue, too, when you sign stuff.
I got it.
Are the rifles black?
I don't know. We'll see when I take it apart. Sometimes when you take them apart, they never go back together. Like, that is black. Well, yeah, it is black.
One in every crop.
My company insisted on black, so...
Our county treasurer likes pink.
Did you see pink?
Yeah, pink, pink.
She's saying she loves dark pink.
Yes, she does.
It's her prerogative.
I'd rather the numbers add up, not pinky.
Yeah, nothing else matters.
Very subtle point. Very true.
I can hear she's watching. That's why I brought it up. Friendly little ribbing.
Why don't you post that one?
I got my orange pen right off.
Stop it.
When it comes to individual liberties.
Does this look a little odd?
I think it's your freedom.
That's a last name, usually, though. Must be, must be two names. This is the color gray for probation.
Joe, that's the color that we're painting on the green sheet?
Julie, would you like us to put a couple of those soft ones on the side for you?
All right. Way out of bounds.
Okay, it is 9:15. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again abiding by the Open Meeting Act as amended. First item on this agenda is to approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on June 26, 2023.
Chairman, I would move to approve the min-... ...mission meetings that was held on June 26 of 2023.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Brans.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Next item is certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor, and it looks like I have some in front of me. Is that correct, Julie?
Yes, you do.
Good morning.
Good morning. Julie Steen, I'm Lincoln County Assessor. I should have one for real estate. That is a correction by the state for a homestead exemption percentage amount that the applicant qualifies for. And then two on the personal property returns where the business is sold after the first of the year. So we're actually accelerating the 2023 taxes on the two personal properties.
Okay, okay. For real estate first, Linda Sobolinski, McCabe Avenue here in North Platte. This is a, the state changed the 2022 homestead amount, homestead exemption amount from 70% to 100%.
Wow.
So that allows for a $471.78 advantage.
Very nice. I think she provided more medical expenses after, after the fact. She found some more or something.
Okay, so that's the only real estate one.
Make a motion. We approve the corrections of refund submitted by the county assessor and authorize chairman to sign.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hubley.
Aye.
Brans.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. And the next is on personal property, and this is for, there's two of them, correct?
Yes.
And they both for Somer Farms. One is for Somer Farms and the other one is for M-N-C Holdings?
G-N-C. Did she write an M? I think it should be G-N-C Holdings.
Okay, yeah, GNC Holdings of Pittsburgh, PA. Okay, this is for accelerated personal property taxes. Somer Farms, East State Farm Road Maxwell was sold in February 2023. 10% penalty received in 614. This is in the amount of $131.89. Is this on the same properties or different?
No, the GNC is different.
That's different.
Yep.
Okay, that's Somer Farms. The second one is on accelerated personal property taxes. Store closed. 1723, 10% penalty received, 53023. So this one is accelerated tax amount of $237.97. So we have two of those for accelerated taxes, 13189 and 237.97.
Make a motion. We approve the correction of refund for personal property taxes submitted by the assessor.
Second.
Authorize the chairman to sign.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hubley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brans.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Okay, next item on this agenda is motor vehicle tax exemption applications as submitted by the county treasurer. Good morning.
Good morning.
Alex Gerchulow, Lincoln County Treasurer?
Are you the person that I heard uses pinky once in a while? Oh, yeah, okay.
Today's red.
Red, okay. Looks like we have three of them, correct?
Yes, yes.
And, Mr. Chairman, if you're ready. Yes, sir. I'd make a motion that we approve the application for exemption by the American Red Cross for two vehicles. One a Chevy Equinox and the second one a, well, they're both Chevy Equinoxes. Let me make sure we got, this isn't a...
No, two different bins.
Two, two different ones, okay. And both used for charitable purposes, recommended for approval by our Lincoln County Treasurer. My motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hubley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brans.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I have an application for exemption by the North Platte Hospital Corporation's Great Plains Health for a Ford 2001 van and an H&amp;H 2002 trailer. Their paperwork indicates it's for charitable use and general hospital use. It has been approved by Lincoln County Treasurer Alex Gerchulow with a comment that says not charitable will accept for general use according to state statute. It is my recommendation that we approve the application.
We have a motion. Second. And a second. Any discussion? Thank you for making that notation on that.
Yes, thanks, Alex.
Yeah, according to that, I don't think we really have any wiggle room on these.
No.
Statute's pretty clear.
Nope. I just decided to put that note on there just because it's according to state statute, but not charitable, but there's no other classification.
That's very good. Thank you for doing that. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Luler.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Brans.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other business to come before the Lincoln County Board of Equalization at this time? If none, we shall recess as the Lincoln Court County Board of Equalization and reconvene as Lincoln County Board of Commissioners at 9:22. as Lincoln County Board of Commissioners at 9:22.
He is so reasonably priced on the work that he does.
He's a good guy.
Yeah, he really is.
Full family.
I hired his flat, you can also hire him. Inside.
And I'm guessing this is...
Maybe his house was over in the potato box, and they came out and just such a reasonable amount, and we noticed all the other ones reduced to... I haven't seen you in a seat, Tony Ryan is the guy saying... I did not make that connection. Funny how that works. We pulled over for a bad storm, and we were sitting in one of the fast food restaurants while she was staying, Kathy Walker, and it was fun to catch up with her.
She's your sister.
I did not make that connection. Funny how that works. I get to see her in jail frequently.
Well, that answers our question. We're still doing the work, they just outside. HHS. Think it would be appropriate that we talk to Tyler, we can keep track, there are two of those, and kind of look at the volume of the work, you know, we received from it, there's two in my comparison, so.
This is one of the services that they take care of?
That's the primary. Yes, first.
You wanted Tyler to be aware of this?
Oh, no, I'll just talk to, not a big deal at all. Tyler's sharp enough, he might already be aware of it before you've seen it, so he doesn't miss much.
Melissa, you're gonna be with us a fair bit today, huh? She is one lucky person.
Do you know, we got him retrained, he's using the right name for you now, so.
I know, this morning, yes. Well, why don't you tell me the date of?
There might be all kinds of names getting used by them.
It is 9:30. Our next agenda item is to discuss and consider request of veteran service office to go from a 35-hour week to a 40-hour week. Whoa, increasing your hours of work?
Yes.
Please come up and tell us about that.
Ask for this request, if I didn't have, I wanted to give you guys to provide evidence.
Would you state who you are, please?
Yeah. I'll go, we'll do it official.
I'll even sit down. Okay.
My name is Tom Gann, I'm the Lincoln County Veteran Service Officer here in Lincoln County.
Great, thank you, sir.
Good morning, Tom.
Good morning, Commissioners. Right here, what I'm providing right here is just office visits right here. I've read back the veterans' information that I provided to county commissioners, some detail of each office visit. This is phone calls to the office provided. I left out the, all the detail, but I just wanted to show you the detail that is provided in this, okay? Keep in mind, all the office visits and phone calls are not on there. We do our best to do that. Everything has to be done by hand. So a lot of visits, a lot of phone calls are done with like the funeral homes in adjacent counties for information and stuff like that stuff. It's kind of hard to track the data. So that's just the month of June, as you can see.
It looks to me as though you had 109 that you've missed.
That's just the ones, yes, 109 visitors, and that's just what we can personally type in and track. Does that make sense?
Yes, and then on the inbound phone calls, 117, and on the outbound, 139. Now, is that...
That's where I pick up the phone and make a phone call, or Melissa picks up a phone and makes a phone call.
Give me some comparison from last month, or you can't give me from a year ago, but can you from a month?
Yes, I can. I, I just brought you for the month, but I can give you the details of, of previous months, yes. I can. And I gave you some previous months details that for you to remember.
Yeah.
On phone calls and information and paperwork. It was more detailed last time, but I just wanted to show you this, this last month. I can give you even like, let's see, January, February, March, March, April, May, June. So I can give you April, May, and June.
So tell me how these numbers correlate to the previous months.
I would, I would say higher or about the same. Everything is always going up. Am I answering your question correctly?
Yes, so I'm guessing that's why you want to increase your office hours.
Yes, and I'm not expecting a decision today, but I know it's for the beginning of the, of the physical year, so to speak, but something I would like to consider. I know it's something that's probably gonna be thought about because it is budget related.
Tom, you're currently there from 9 to 4, or what's your hours?
Right now, we're 9 to 4. I'm there more.
Right.
Because my job is to take care of the veteran no matter what.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think you're probably putting in a lot more than 35 hours anyway.
Yes, sir, I am.
And I think we recognize that you're doing all you can. So your point today, Tom, is just to be a little more convenient for your veterans to extend your day officially, the office being open till 5, or how do you...
Well, very good question. The detail would be to allow more paperwork to be done, and because my, my, my goal would be, start at 8 versus 9, okay? And take the lunch the same, and then from there, that 8 to 9 would be paperwork, be paperwork related. There's, is, there is a lot of paperwork.
Without interruptions?
Yes, without interruptions, you know, phone calls and that type of things, because we do try to answer every phone call. I try to get back with the veteran or the family within, within a 24-hour period, or sooner. I mean, the extent out would be 24 hours, and sometimes it's, it can be, it can be challenging. But, so my goal, to get back to your question, is 8 to 9 would be like paperwork, prep for the next meeting, prep for the next veteran or family, and then 9 o'clock to 5 with the lunch, minus the lunch, would be the same business practice.
I'm sorry, so you're, are you going to 5 now, or you're 4, which was?
We're 5 o'clock now.
Oh, you are 5, okay.
Yes, sir.
So you'd be going from 9 to 5 to 8 to 5?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And what additional expense will that incur for your budget?
Quite a bit, I'm sure. I haven't done the number, I've done a little bit. But that, it's just something, like I said, I just want to bring to the forefront right away. I know it's probably a decision that can be made until we do the budget, but I just wanted to bring it to the commissioners that this is the direction I'd like to go.
Tom, if I might, when we receive our budget request from the office, and you can certainly get it to the chairman or Becky earlier, but there's a form in there for things that would change in your office, and there's also a financial statement that goes with that, so you want to fill that out.
Okay.
Go to tail an extra, you know, five hours times two people a week, add X number of dollars for this and that left, and that would go as part of that justify justification during the budget time, and/or you can certainly do that sooner, however the chairman would like, but that's...
Tyler, do we need to have a, have an action on that today, or as Joe has suggested, have Tom work that into his budget request when we see that here in a few weeks?
I would go with that one. I think it's great he wants to work an extra five hours a week, but if there's not gonna be money in the budget, there's not gonna be money in the budget. So I would personally, easily wait until the board puts together the budget, and just put a little asterisk on his budget, knowing that if there's money to allocate it, then you have to actually, officially, other hours.
Basically, we're at that time of year right now, so I may not like this.
Yeah.
So you would have simply taken the matter of the court.
Yeah, and I think that's really a great forward thinking, Tom, and I appreciate you for that, and also for the effort that you're putting forth in regards to our veterans, it's very much appreciated, and I'm sure they appreciate it as well. I know I do from the, just as a citizen of the county, but I think Joe has given you some good information in regards to when you prepare your budget for us.
We can definitely see that the volume's picked up, and the amount of veterans going in and out of your office, which is a good thing.
Yeah, it is a good thing.
It, it, it gives me great joy knowing that the veteran community is really taking care of, so looking forward to seeing how everything cracks out with the numbers and seeing what we can do in that regard.
And I would totally concur with both the chairman and Chris. Thank you.
I'm gonna echo that sentiment. I try to stop by your office most Mondays after our meetings, and from months...
That takes up part of that time.
He kicks me out pretty quickly. But I have seen a lot more volume of people coming and going, and even people waiting outside the office for their turn to go in, so we appreciate what you and Melissa are doing over there. I've had a lot of positive feedback in the veteran, not just the veteran community, but from their families too, so thank you, and I'm, I'm glad that you want to work more hours for them.
Okay, Tom, we will table this, and we'll look forward to seeing some notations on the budget that you bring to us here in the next few weeks.
Well, I appreciate, I got a couple of things, one, a couple of things. One is, you guys approved Jeff Borm, and you wanted him to swear in Tyler? Is that something that I do or set up, or?
Somebody needs to contact the VSO.
Typically, the vet, the VSO has coordinated that, yes.
So I talked to who?
One of the district or county court judges. The district court judge is usually easier to get to.
So district court judges, that we said?
I recommend Judge Bulkmer.
Judge who?
Bulkmer.
Is that the one that swore me in?
I don't know.
Uh, probably not.
No, that would have been Judge J.
Yeah, I think that might have been Judge J.
The district court judges have a little more, their day is a little less structured, so they have more time available.
Okay, so I just look them up, look them, forgive me, I'm new at this, so...
Third floor, just walk up there and say, hey, when you get somebody sworn in.
If you come by Wednesday to see me, I can take that.
All right, thank you.
He's got some connections up there.
Okay, I can tell by the last name. It didn't go over my head, I got it. A quick thing, and we talked about it before, is I just wanted to know, I'd like a camera installed, and I brought it up before. I didn't know if that was gonna come out of my budget, since budget's coming up, or it's part of the building inside the office, I'd like a camera.
Security camera in the reception area.
Yes.
Did I turn in a request to the board? And if it were me, I, I don't know, but I, in the past, that's been something the board's done on individual offices, because it's a county-wide security, so I'd make the request, maybe, maybe you've already made it, and I think that's something that this board would consider, and we have a safety committee, so that would be my suggestion.
So put it, put in a request, is what you're saying, or?
Unless that already was a request, you could certainly make that a written request as to specifically what you would like.
You'll have to put in a separate request, or it's not actually on the agenda for the bachelor.
No, I know that. I'm just, like I said, I, I don't come up here, I don't get time to come up here a lot, so I'm gonna try to squeeze.
So that would be something you put on our agenda in our future for us to consider that.
All right.
You might want to talk to Dave, our IT, to make sure that they can do that over there.
Yeah, and he, Dave's the one that said that it shouldn't come out of the budget, it should, because it's a building.
Right.
My budget, so to speak, but...
Just work with Dave to get pricing.
Yep, and he did that for me too, also.
Cause people are bored, so.
Get, get on the agenda with, for next week.
Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Tom.
Have a great fourth.
You as well.
Yes, I'll reinvent the state.
We are, we are a blessed nation, and, and we've got a lot to be thankful for to be free, okay?
You bet.
Guys, take care.
Thank you.
Hopefully that camera was running when you said that.
Oh, good morning, Tristan.
Good morning. Mr. Williams, Mr. Burns, you guys call each other this morning?
Probably.
Call each other?
Blue polo day?
I apologize.
Oh, oh. It's the first, first Monday of the month, Tristan.
Oh, we must have missed the memo.
I just looked good in blue.
Just beside the table.
Won't be the first time, won't be the last time.
Okay, our next agenda item is to discuss and consider Resolution Number 2023-13 certifying proper completion of Project STWD-CBMP, basically O'Fallon's Bridge Replacement Project.
Yes, sir. Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent.
Okay, so tell me what you have in... Okay, so tell me what you have in store on this resolution, Jason?
So this resolution is basically just stating that we've completed the project per all the contract documents and per our agreement with the state. And it's the last step in being able to get our reimbursement from the county bridge match program.
And that amount is?
The amount is not on here. It's a little more than $43,000.
$43,164, possibly.
Yeah.
And that comes from the state, correct?
Yes, correct.
And that project has been completed?
Yep, everything is completed. It's completed, paved, opened.
Mr. Chairman, if you are ready.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2023-13 concerning the proper completion of Project STWP-CBMP for the O'Fallon Bridge Replacement Project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Jason, thank you for all your work on this. I know there were a lot of hoops to jump through as far as the state portion of the funding on that. And it's nice that Lincoln County doesn't have to withstand all those costs.
Yes, definitely.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Hughley?
Aye.
Uller?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
There's a little space in between. There is, indeed.
Okay, our 9:45 agenda item is discuss and consider authorizing the chairman to sign an agreement for professional services with Miller and Associates for the construction phase of the Sutherland North Bridge Project.
Yeah, so this, this is the first part of, I guess, our big work for today, or my big work for the day. So it's just entering into the agreement for the construction phase of the Sutherland Bridge Project with Miller and Associates. And this will allow us to proceed forward with the project towards bidding it.
Okay, and this is for their services during the construction phase, correct?
Yes.
Because we've all, we've already incorporated some of their services in regards to planning and bidding.
Yes, yep. And we've had this agreement for some time. Tyler has reviewed before, but we were holding off on signing this until we got the approval from the state to proceed with the project. So this will be the first step in making it all happen.
Mr. Chairman, I'm chomping at the bit.
Yep. Okay, with that in mind, I would, I would welcome a, a comment from District Guard Commissioner.
I don't want to make a comment, I just want to make the motion.
Please do.
Please do.
I'd make a motion that we authorize the chairman to sign an agreement for professional services with Miller and Associates for the construction phase of the Sutherland North Bridge Project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
For the record, Chair, Chairman, I would make note that longtime trooper soldier in this process, our colleague, Commissioner Hughley, thank you for all the years you've put in on this. And to Jason's predecessor, Carlo Adell, and others that did a lot of hard work and heavy lifting, trying to move this forward.
Thank you.
I'd like to recognize those people for their efforts as well. It's been a long time, and hallelujah is here.
Those were two of the best phone calls I've got to make since I've been on this board, was to call you and Joe after Jason sent me that email, because I knew you two would be elated that this is finally moving on. So thank you for letting me have that pleasure.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Hughley?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Uller?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Now that the vote's taken and passed, I would make a comment about, not somebody on this board or anyone else for the county, but the patients, which was hard on many landlords that use that, mostly north of the river. Good for them, finally.
Yes.
I had numerous conversations over the past few days with property owners up north in my district, passing on the word that we're finally at this milestone. So there's a lot of very happy people in northwestern Lincoln County right now.
Yeah, and it gives me great pleasure to be able to sign this document. And we have one more. So we'll have to wait just a little bit here. Commissioner Weems made, made a good statement there in regards to the many people that need to be thanked for this project, not the least of which is Hugh, Jason. You've, you've been kind of a newcomer to this project, only about a year, but your diligence and your following through with all of the steps that needed to be taken in a very timely manner is very much appreciated, and I'm sure that is a significant part of the completion of this project. But I'd also like to, in addition to the comments that were made from Commissioner Weems, I'd like to recognize the work that former Commissioner Bill Henry did in this project. Bill was on this board for some time, and he did a fair amount of work, considerable amount of work, on moving this project forward, as did many people. Former road superintendent Carlo Adell was very instrumental in a lot of the processes as well. And I think those two people, there's more that need to be recognized, but those are two people that have been involved with this since I've been on the board for four and a half years. So thank you to all those individuals. Okay, it's 9:50. Discuss and consider setting a date to receive bids for the Sutherland North Bridge Project.
So we are, after the agreement's signed, we're ready to put the project out to bid. So after some discussions with Miller and Associates, they are ready to advertise and go. So we're just, need to set a date.
What's the date that you recommend, Jason?
I would recommend August 21st.
At what time?
10:00 AM.
Does that work on your advanced schedule, Deputy County Commissioner? I'll give you a moment to look at that. This is, this is quite a big deal, and.
Multi-decades project. This is a big deal, so.
Numerous years.
Yeah, 10:00 AM. We have not signed a contract, we have not accepted a bid, and we have not turned any dirt on this project yet. But I can see the end. I can see the end.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I would move that we set August 21st at 10:00 AM as the date and time to receive and consider bids for the Sutherland North River Bridge Project.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
The only other thing I wanted to note on that, so being as this is with state funding as well, a little wrinkle in the bid process is just that, once we receive bids, we will forward on Lincoln County's recommendation to the state of apparent low bidder. And then they will have to review the bid documents and then give their final approval as well. But they assured me that would be a pretty quick turnaround as well, so.
Okay, sounds great. Any other discussion?
Jason, do you have any timeline on, once everything gets started up there, about how long the project will take?
We're, I haven't seen the final documents since the last revisions were made yet, but we're thinking around a year, possibly a little bit longer.
Yeah, it's a big project.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Okay.
I think one thing that will help is you might mention how people are going to use that bridge during construction.
As of right now, I don't know. I haven't seen the final documents to see what the phasing looks like as far as the demolition of the old versus the new, so, so I guess I can't fully answer that right now, Joe. But as soon as I do have that information, I'll share that with everyone.
Sure. Superb. Any other discussion? Motion is to set August 21st, 10:00 AM for the setting to receive bids on the Sutherland North Bridge Project. Seconded it?
Joe did.
Joe did. We got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Brunz?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Uller?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye. Thank you, Jason. Thank you all very much.
Huge deal.
It was originally designed, it was designed so that we would keep the other open wide.
Forgot about that one.
200 yards upstream, so I just want people to know they still be able to use it.
Okay, it is 9:55. Our next agenda item is to discuss and consider right-of-way permit changes. And I believe that Commissioner Brunz, you have done some work in this regard?
Well, not just myself, but Commissioner Hughley as well. We sit on the ad hoc committee that you put in place for this, as well as Tyler Volker. We've had, oh goodness, for many, many, many years, we've had an application for right-of-way use that permits different organizations, different companies to utilize county right-of-way for utility work and things along that nature. We had one earlier this meeting.
Yeah.
And that fee has been, essentially, it's been a $20, $25 fee to utilize the county right-of-way that entire time. We all know that we have a lot of infrastructure that's getting put in place. There's a lot of, a lot more use that we're seeing in county right-of-way. And we have had times here and there where there's been entities that have utilized county right-of-way and not probably taken care of that land, or done the projects in a manner that has been required. And so we've had some damage, not only to the county's right-of-way, but that leads to subsequent damage to neighboring properties. And so we decided that we needed to take a look at this. Aside from that, that aspect, there's a lot of time and energy that goes into reviewing these applications. We all know that the inflationary environment that we have, just the hours that, that manpower spends on reviewing and inspecting and making sure that everything is where it needs to be. The cost of our labor for our county employees has gone up precipitously over the years as well. So just taking a look and making sure that the language is correct with new methods and procedures for how those organizations bore and draw a line across road, that we're doing this in a manner that is in the best interests of Lincoln County taxpayers. And so we took a look at neighboring counties in, in our area, counties in our array. We've collected a lot of data. We have proposed, in the information that everybody has in front of them, a new fee structure. We do see an increase in those fees with a $100 base fee for the permit. There's additional fees for crossing hard surface roads, because that, that has gone up significantly as far as cost. And if there's damage associated with that, we want to be able to make sure that we're able to address it in an appropriate manner. We have a three cent per linear foot for cable or line that would be extended in county right-of-way. We also have, should there be damage to the right-of-way and the company is not able to fix that or does not fix that as required, there's a $200 per hour labor fee that's associated if we have to have county employees go out and take them off of projects that are pertinent to the taxpayers to go out and fix the, the damage left behind by the different organizations that may be utilizing this. So I hope everybody's had time to review this. I know Tyler's worked really hard on the language of this, so has Joe. I think that we have a good product here for a new application.
Tyler, do you have anything you want to add in that regard?
No.
Joe?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate the work that you gentlemen have done on that. It's long overdue, very, very much in line with other counties, I, from your research, correct?
There's a few counties that, that utilize fee structure just like this.
This be, need a motion to approve this document?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the right-of-way use permit changes being presented to the board today.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? When will this go into effect?
As soon as.
And I think that was for the chairman's.
Chairman's sign.
And authorize the chairman to sign.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
To answer your question, I'm not the attorney. Hopefully, when the ink's dry.
When the ink's dry, this is approved, okay? We do have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Brunz?
Aye.
Hughley? Weems?
Aye.
Uller?
Aye.
Woodruff?
I would, Tyler ought to probably comment on this, but I think this would be for any new work going forward, obviously. If we have an agreement with somebody that's already started, we wouldn't expect to change it in the middle of that agreement.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Jason. Don't forget about 8:00 o'clock Wednesday morning. Okay. Okay, is there need for a closed session?
No.
Okay, next item is to hear concerns from elected officials, department heads, or their representatives.
Chairman requested just kind of a follow-up on our pest control program. I did throw together a couple of different, set of texts for advertisement, one for the possible contractor who might be interested. And ask Tyler's assistants to get the legal leas in there and the liability requirements and that type of thing. He's done a great job of, as usual, putting those in. So we will be moving forward. Fourthly, get those advertised in the paper for both our part-time solicitation for part-time field agent or agent for, depending on what's there in the market. And also for the independent contractor, if there's any interest there. So those will be, after Tyler's review, I think, Tyler, we have everything we need for proper language. So we'll be getting those in the paper and have Tammy distribute them online and so forth.
Okay, do we need to have that be an agenda item to approve that, or can we send that to?
Yeah, the board probably needs to sign off on advertising positions and creating that there. I suspect some of the ceremonial votes, but we should probably still take it.
Okay, Melissa, we'd like to have that on next week's agenda, please.
Ken?
Please. Please.
Since we can use all of the free advertisement we can get for that, and our chairman does a great job on the media. That's out. I bet you we can get a, some plug there, too.
I would imagine we probably would get a plug that, both on print and on the air. Seems as though that would be very appropriate to expect that. Yeah. That would be for discussing, consider advertising for the wildlife pest control, either a independent contractor or a part-time employee. Okay, any other concerns from elected officials, department heads, or their representatives? I will keep this open there for just a bit now.
Do you think last of the claims?
I think they are. So, Melissa, do we need to let Julie know we're just about, about finished with this? Please. Jason, how, how things going in your department?
Good. It's like the river's starting to drop just a little bit.
I thought I noticed it was down a bit.
Yeah, we did have a few. We're getting pretty close to having some problems with those starting to seep in, so.
Sure you have a good moisture content now to work then, right?
And I suspect the last few little rings have helped out with general road condition as far as conditioning.
Welcome more.
Yeah. But not huge amounts at one time.
True.
She be ready when?
She's finishing something.
Okay, sounds good. Ladies, gentlemen, anything particularly you wanted to discuss? We have a few minutes. Okay, that's coming up here shortly then. Thank you. You like those drawings?
Well, yeah, I mean, I've seen a million of them. Interesting.
Guessing been on the project that he wants to, huh?
What?
Guessing been on the project that he wants to, huh?
Oh, I'm talking about something else.
Oh.
I'm sorry. I think what's deep in the ditch.
Stuff brought over, so it'll be a little bit.
Well, just get Chris signing fast for me a week ago. He just happens to be at the end of the table. We did, again, we didn't know. Of course, we didn't. It's a different agreement. So are we? Of course.
Yep.
Good, because it has to be.
Yeah, he's gonna interview out there.
Yeah, so. Interesting. That's my point. Otherwise, I could have kept the, China wrote it, aren't we? Right, yeah. Yeah, and so now somebody has to grant those, don't they? That's my point. I don't know where this originated at.
You know me and erroneous stuff.
So I had a relative come to me mid-week last week saying they were gonna be passing through and wanting to stay with us one night.
Yeah.
And so I took my grandkids down to the basement where they play and had them clean up. And William wanted to sort it, you know, and decide which toys he was gonna keep. And I told him, there's not time for that. Just shove them in a cupboard and close the door. And he informed me that if she looked in the cupboard, there would be an avalanche. So at some point, I need to make some time for that. So mine's at least out of sight. Yes.
Do I need to read through that information again?
That's right, her, Jerry.
I think I heard that back in.
What was the date again?
You did?
Maybe I did.
I play in parks. Always put like
And this?
How my guys do it. They go maybe big, little to big when I hold them on my hand. I don't, I go big.
Please and thank you.
There it is, there it is.
Oh, did you give me a whole?
I tell you what, some people's kids.
Found it, Tammy.
Sorry.
Okay.
I don't know where my head is. Boy, I don't do that pretty good.
Last name's Reed.
My kids don't like it.
When, when did you file that? The past week?
When I left, they gave me, they gave me information, but I didn't, I just thought it was a joke.
We have several hundred protests. I, I think that the ones that got done just this last week probably haven't been included in this tranche of.
Did you receive a written thing back?
I did not. I did pay. It's okay. I, I don't mind sitting here hearing how it goes anyway today. So when I do, when I do go through it.
Who, who are we looking for, guys?
Reeves.
It's not.
But it's not worked yet.
It's not.
We know it's not enough.
Hasn't passed through their official.
Okay, so it's still with the referee?
No, it was just filed, but it's still in my office.
It's in the court's office.
It hasn't been, through the process yet. In here? In here? Oh, already out. Say, Marcia Trigo, when you come in here, sorry, number. It was your day? Oh, Reeves. Oh, okay.
It's not in here.
I don't see it.
Yes. If you have, I just don't have them scheduled. So I guess I would be a few guys that we got it.
See any issue with it?
We have. I have. Can you get Chester to do it a little bit?
No, that's, that's.
Is that okay?
Absolutely.
I'm just sort of blindsided. Give me a chance.
Yeah.
Um, ready for me to start?
I am.
Okay, so it is 10:23. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization. We will discuss and consider property valuation protests, Form 4222. I call this meeting to order, and I will. I call this meeting to order and I will restate that this, we will be abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended. Those present are all five county commissioners, Commissioner Joe Hughley, Commissioner Michaela Huler, Commissioner Kent Weems, Commissioner Chris Brunson, and myself, Jerry Woodruff. Notice was given that on May 24th, 2023. Oh, and Melissa, excuse me, Deputy County Assessor, or excuse me, Clerk Melissa Wilson is present, as is County Assessor Julie Stinger, and several of her, members of her office will be joining us through the rest of the day. Those are the folks that are present. Notice was given that on May 24th, 2023, a certificate from the Lincoln County Assessor was received and filed by the Lincoln County Clerk. Said certificate indicates the Lincoln County Assessor has completed the revision of the 2023 assessment rolls for real property for Lincoln County. Copies of county profiles for residential, commercial, and agricultural properties are on file as well as this assessor's worksheets. After each board member has had a chance to individually review the protest, assessor's recommendation, referee's recommendation, if applicable, and many, and make any notes or comments himself or herself, the board will collectively vote on each individual protest. These meetings are recorded. So we will begin with. Pardon? Okay.
So last week, we pushed through Marjorie Jacobson. And it was, you made that motion. She did come in and file some more stuff. So can we rescind that motion, look at this, and then make a motion on what she has brought? She was, she was saying, I mean, she made it, she put her protest in on the 14th. We approved it last week or made our motion.
What day was our meeting last week?
She would technically have until July, or June 30th. So she had.
Yeah, but I need to rescind my, the action that we took in my motion, which was.
26.
26, yes.
So can I give this to you, Chris?
Absolutely.
Okay, anything else, Melissa?
Mr. Chairman, may I?
So you want to turn on your microphone? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'll let you go ahead and start.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to rescind action that we took on protest number 53 last week, June 26th, concerning the property owned and protested by Marjorie Jacobson. As new information has come in and want to make sure that the assessor's office has had plenty of time to amply review that before bringing it back to the Board of Equalization for, for the review and action. That would be my motion. The protest number is 53. The property identification number is 87616.00.
And this is a motion to rescind last week's action?
Correct.
I have a motion.
Second.
Thank you. I'm going to be tied up with this for a little bit, so thank you.
Aye.
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 Woodruff.
Aye. Okay, so that will be reviewed again, correct? Brought back to us, okay. Since Joe's working on that, Michaela, do you want to start the process?
I will. Mr. Chairman, I have protest number 66 for property ID number 00249990, located in Leroy's subdivision lot 2, 520 South Belmont Street in North Platte. The protested valuation is $108,576. They are requesting a lower valuation of $93,600. Statement says this is a rental property, but our rent is low. We just raised our rent last year to cover tax rise last year. We can't raise the rent again or our renters will move out. I understand town needs money, but we need to live too. It did go before a referee. It was reviewed by Henry. Henry valued the land at $10,063, the improvements at $98,513 for a total of $108,576. The referee agreed with Henry's review and recommendation. The information presented by the owner was not sufficient to legitimize a decrease in value. Therefore, my. I'm going to go with. No change. I move to accept number three. Sorry, it can take me a while to get up to speed here. Number three, I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor and referee, which indicates no change at this time. No evidence was presented to warrant a change. There was no pictures submitted validating a lower property value.
It was just the statement that they provided?
Just the statement was all that was provided.
Second.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Brunns.
Aye.
Eadley.
Aye.
Huler.
Aye.
Okay, this is.
Just a second. I do want to state in the record too, that parcel ID number was 24990.00, not 999.
Oh, I'm here, it says 999.
Yeah, I think that's incorrect.
And so can I correct it on here?
I think you can, yeah. Will you use red, please?
Yeah, I'll let you write it in. Unless Ryan.
It was Leroy's.
That's what it looks like to me. Yeah, Leroy's.
Yeah, 990.00. So just two zeros. 24990. Zero. Point 00. Just two nines, not three nines. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, that's completed, correct? I would make a motion on protest number 70. This is for the same people that we just listened to. This is a Hinson J. Boo.
Yes.
North Jeffers. Property identification number is 042725. Miller's Edition 314. The property is 812 South Chestnut. They are protesting the total land and buildings of $55,424. They are requesting $47,480. This is a rental property, but our rent is the rise from last year to cover the tax. We can't raise the rent again. Renters will move out. I understand for the same reasons that we just listened to about the tight money situation. This did go to referee and referee concurred with the county assessors, which says no change. Insufficient evidence to warrant a change. All south side parcels received a 1.16 trended adjustment for falling out of compliance with state ratios. This was reviewed by Henry and it will be my motion. There's no change. Number five, I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor and referee, which indicates no change at this, at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change. And the land will be valued at $8,224, improvements at $47,200 for a total of $55,424. And that's my motion number five.
Second.
Weems.
Aye.
Brunns.
Aye.
Eadley.
Go ahead.
Huler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Protest number is 68. Property ID number is 0028660. This is part of Miller's Edition. 117, the physical address is 117 South Willow here in North Platte. The protest has been filed by Mr. Hishan Boo. Again, this is one of Mr. Boo's rental properties. He's requesting a protest evaluation of 110,328 aggregate, and his request is to reduce it to $95,000. Comments from Mr. Boo. This is a rental property. The rent is, we cannot raise the rent to, in the lease year, to cover the additional tax expense. And we understand that the town needs money, but we need to live as well. The referee did see this protest and Mr. Boo did provide some pictures, this evidence, and actually reviewed this in conjunction with the referee's consideration. Her comments are recommending no change due to insufficient evidence to warrant the change, and also noting that the 1.16 trended adjustment for falling out of compliance with the state guidelines had to be met. The referee concurs. So both recommend, and I would, it would be my motion to approve a no change number five, leaving the land at 8,590, the improvements at 101,738, for a total valuation of $110,328. Second.
Brunns.
Aye.
Eadley.
Aye.
Huler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Aye. Mr. Chairman, I have protest number 71. This is. Protester's name is Hassan Boo. I actually have several properties from the same protester, as I'm sure everybody else does. The property ID number is 17675.10. Legal description. Find the actual legal description because I can't read that. Is Fred L. Gagans Replat, number two. Current valuation has land at $15,619, improvements at $68,724 for total valuation of $84,343. The requested valuation just has total land and improvements dropping down to $73,000 flat. The protester provided the same reason for the valuation change as we've heard, stating that this is a rental property, but our rent is low and we, I think that's low, and we just raised our rent. The tax rise last year, we can't raise the rent again or renters will move out. I understand this town needs money, but we need to live too. They did see a referee on this. No evidence was presented. I feel for the record that, and I stated this last, last week, that it's important that we point this out. Again, property valuations are different than tax rates that people are paying. The property, the assessed value is an indicator of the market as directed by state statute. This Board of Equalization has to apply equalized and prudent and fair valuations across the county for light kind properties. State statute dictates that we have formulas that the assessor has to utilize in assessing those properties. Part of that includes costing for 2023 for building costs and other things that includes recent changes in inflation. And all things considered, sedereus paribus, that the changes in the legislature, if there's no increase in local political subdivision expenditures, people should see a decrease in their property tax rates. But that said, I empathize with the protester stating that, you know, they're relying on rents, but that is different than the property valuation that the assessor is bound by state statute to apply and that this Board of Equalization is bound by state statute to implement. And so I want to make sure that that's on the record, that there's clear understanding of that because this is being livestreamed and there are people watching and I want to make sure that that education is provided. They are two different things. They are closely related, but they are two different things. The protester did meet with the referee. They did not provide any additional evidence for, for their protest, merely their statement and whatever they supplied in that face-to-face meeting. The referee made a recommendation to maintain the assessor's recommendation of what was assessed, having land at $15,619, improvements at $68,724 for a total valuation of $84,343. It would be my motion, number three, that I move to accept the recommendation of both the assessor and the referee, which indicates no change at this time. No evidence was presented to warrant a change, bringing the property into a different classification for market value.
Sorry. Second.
Eadley.
Aye.
Huler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Brunns.
Aye.
Property valuation protest number 103 by Hope Suzanne Reeves. They did see the referee on this. The property identification number is 0036502.00. The legal is Russian Olive Estate subdivision 3.2. The address is 814 Russian Olive Road, North Platte. The protester is requesting a land and building value of $141,793 be reduced to $127,124, which was their last year's valuation. Their reason for justification is this neighborhood was recently declared blighted and substandard by the city council September 6, 2022, see minutes of regular meeting, meeting attached. Additionally, no major updates or additions have been made to the land or the property of the above, above normal maintenance and upkeep. The, both the assessor and referee are recommending no change, that the land remain at $18,618. The buildings with $123,175 for a total of $141,793. I did verify the values on the assessment sheet. I did verify the minutes from the. I did verify the minutes from the September sixth, twenty twenty-two meeting. And I will, I will add a little bit of information with that. What brought the blighted and substandard request was a request for a development on workforce development housing in the Russian area of Olives by the Wilkerson Companies. And Gil Wilkerson specifically owns that property, has had it for thirty, forty years, I think, and has not developed. But with the housing shortage, I think felt that this was an appropriate time for a development out there. So as part of that request, and I will read this further. The statement was made. Oren Icau from the Wilkerson Companies called the council that is the right time to develop the land and it might not happen for a year, but they would like to sell off lots to builders and hopefully develop fifty to sixty homes to help with the housing shortage. She stated that they will not be able to do the project without tax increment financing and they have not yet decided if the homes will be, all be single family or there will be some multifamily. The council did hear this and on the motion for blighted and substandard, it passed on, I believe, a five-three vote. Those were the minutes. Those are the factual items that I have reviewed and also the factual items reviewed by Marcia Prigo, the referee on this project. I would invite Ms. Reeves to come forward and maybe you can just grab a chair if you want and to offer any additional testimony or new testimony that may not have been available at the time, other than the testimony that I've already read. Good morning.
Good morning.
State your name, please.
Pope Suzanne Reeves.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I think I was pretty thrilled in going through what the information was. Is there any new or additional information that you would have since that time? I, let me, let me state one other thing. I think I, I also verified that I went back on the sale price in 2021. I think it was June of twenty-one, of one hundred and eighty-two thousand. I need to make that the record. Please go ahead.
So I can't remember the lady's name who I talked to. I've never been through one of these before, so I had no idea what I needed to have or whatever. But she did mention that the sale price of the house, what I paid for the home. And I guess on that note...
The referee when you talked...
Yes, when I talked to her, she, she mentioned that that would be a big problem for my protest. Pardon me, that doesn't make any sense since I paid that in 2021. The assessed valuations didn't seem to reflect that during that time, the following year. So I guess I'm a little bit frustrated as to why that would matter now and why I would hit, get necessarily hit twice for it. Secondly, the valuations or the, the North Platte area housing market has only gone up 6.1%. So I'm, I'm confused as to why we're trying, why my property specifically is gone up more than that.
Sure, I'm gonna...
And I don't know the percentage.
I think I can help you a little bit. In 2022, there was a trend adjustment of 1.04. And in 2023, a trended adjustment of 1.16. I'm going to have the assessor's office address those items as to what they mean. But I want to make sure that I didn't misunderstand you and I may have. Are you saying that you would have liked it if your taxes could have went up last year rather than this year?
No, I feel like that was the, that was the reason I was given and it doesn't make any sense since it's not clearly equally applied every year.
Okay, would, would somebody like to address that to the assessor's office?
Okay, and one thing, when they have a sale, we're not supposed to change the sale because they call that sales chasing.
That's correct.
So we can't change that sale until we review the area, which we're going to review this year.
And you might mention the reason that is, it's a massive appraisal. Go ahead.
And we have a ratio that we have to meet. And if it falls out of compliance, which it has this year, well, the last two years, in 22, we put a four percent increase on the twenty, twenty value for the card. Okay, and now this year, we took that four percent off and we put a sixteen percent off on the twenty-twenty because we're falling out of compliance with the state. If we hadn't have done that, the state would have come in and embraced it up to ninety-six percent, which is what they look for.
So when you look at the recent blighted substandard, whatever, for whatever reason that was put on there, it was intimated during that time that our property values would be affected as far as like they would go down.
Inclimated by whom?
Which?
No, stop, Henry. I ask a question. By whom and when was that? When was that implied that they would go down?
It was a concern that was brought up, one of the things...
From one of the citizens out in the area?
Yes.
That's right. So not factual, but somebody in the area said, well, blighted and substandard is going to make my property go down.
It was a question that was asked and it was...
Will it, will it make it go down?
Yes.
And how did the council respond?
That it could, but the property values would go back up once development had been done.
Okay. Blighted and substandard, and this is really something that's confusing to people, has zero to do with property values, zero. Blighted and substandard is a tool, I'm going to call it that, that the state of Nebraska allows to receive TIF financing. In other words, to help a developer come in and, and pay for part of the infrastructure, the roads, the sewers on a new development. And blighted and substandard really, it should be called something else. It really should because it just, it just, it implies that, oh, my property's old. You know what? Blighted and substandard means the property's over fifty years old. That's all it means. Doesn't mean it's good, bad, good shape. My, my homes, I think I live out in a good part of town. I think my house would qualify probably for blighted and substandard. It lives about the new number of developments going on. Please.
And it's not even that specific property. It's a property in that area that has been designated. So you may have brand-new, very nice properties in the area that they designate, but they're extending that outreach, that, that boundary of that area to encompass a property that meets the criteria for TIF financing's requirement of blighted and substandard.
And that, that really is one of the things that's terribly understood. And when, and I've attended a number of TIF hearings and hear people say that and I just, and it's, and I don't expect the council to say anything different because they're not involved in the assessment end or anything like that. I, I will say though, that I need to make you aware of this, that this board has three options. We can either accept the recommendations that have been made by the, either the assessor, the referee or both, or we can make a new finding of our own based upon facts. And this board has the right to either go higher or lower. I can tell you in the past, and it's not been isolated cases where we have gone higher, when we find that a property, you know, you're supposed to be assessed based on ninety-six to, ninety-two, two-hundred percent. It actually says you're supposed to be assessed at a hundred percent. But we know nobody, we, we just can't stay current with everybody's home being up here. So the state allows us to range to be in. And if we fall out of that range, that's what Henry was talking about, then we start giving it small incremental things to build back up. This board is not tied to the assessment rules and regulations necessarily, all of them that the assessor's office is. Because we're hearing an individual protest, although it's based on a mass appraisal. It's still an individual protest. So when I see that you paid one hundred and eighty-two thousand for your home, my guess is you probably wouldn't sell that today to me for one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars.
I wouldn't sell it now at all. There's no place to go.
Why, that's my point. So that's what we have to look at. So you obviously yourself feel that your house is worth more than that.
No, I haven't thought about selling it all.
No, but I say, do you think your house is worth more than that?
I don't know. I think it's worth what I paid at this point because that's what I paid.
Yeah.
That's what I paid for it.
Right. So that's, that's, that's a little bit of my confusion is when people pay, they say my, I think my house is worth this, but when...
I can understand that. I do have my own questions though because when you look at the, the history of the sale price of the house versus the valuations and the taxes on the house, it's always been lower. So I'm not trying to come in and demand anything more. I'm confused as to why the valuation was so much, three percent, four percent. Even the 6.1% would make sense to me at this time. I don't quite understand the ginormous jump. And on top of the blighted and substandard thing, for me, it doesn't make any sense.
Let me state it, state it one more time. The reason for the jump was, in my opinion, should be far more than what it is. Far, far more than what the assessor made. But the reason for the jump is the law states your property is to be assessed at about a hundred percent of its value. The value is one hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. So we, you should be paying taxes on one hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, period. So the state says, we're going to allow you a range of ninety-two percent of that to a hundred percent. So ninety-two percent of a one hundred and eighty-two thousand or whatever that is, we could say, we could go down to there. Although the state usually tries to shoot in the middle. Ninety-six percent is how it's usually adjusted if you had to go to a tax equalization or review commission meeting. So that's where I'm at and that's where I'm having myself a hard time. And I'd like to hear from my colleagues if they might have something different.
So to, to your question about the percent increases of the city of North Platte's housing going up, that is, that's lumping everything into one pot. There are certain areas of town where property sales have gone up much higher than other areas of town. And so when we do these mass appraisals, our assessor and her team are looking at specific areas of the community and they have their own criteria that they're looking at per the costing formulas and the sales comparisons and everything else that's associated with that area. And that's where you're seeing the changes. So, no, 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 hold on.
Stop. Oh, stop, stop, stop. We'd be glad to hear from you, sir, but don't, this is being recorded. If you'd like to hear, please come on up. We can get you a chair. And I'd be glad to listen to what you're saying. If you, are you an owner? Are you the owner of the property?
None of this house, no. Okay.
So, so I'm, I'm going to speak to a few more things here, okay? Property valuations by state statute are a measure of the market. Okay, I'm going to give you some, some key pieces of information on what our market looks like here in Lincoln County, the entire county. Forty-six houses on the market this last month, forty-six. Half of them, I guarantee you probably nobody in this room would want to live in.
Yeah, I know that.
We had, this year alone, seven permits for new construction of houses, seven. We have thousands of new jobs coming into our county, thousands. We have extremely high demand and extremely low supply. That is a, these valuations are a function of the free market as directed by state statute. Our market is crap right now. No ifs, ands, or buts about it. It is very unhealthy. It is crap, period. We are bound by state statute to value properties across the board based on the market. And there are certain metrics the state legislature dictates that we have to utilize. And I empathize, I do. My property tax, my valuations went up precipitously this year. And it's the third year that they've gone up significantly. I, I feel the frustration.
As did all of ours, including one of my properties I have at the lake went straight up.
I'm, I'm talking a valuation increase of about ninety thousand dollars this year alone, okay, on my property. It is different than your property tax rate, okay? And that's...
The property tax rate is based on the valuation.
Your property, your, your levy...
So I'm not trying to disagree. I'm just saying...
So, but here's, here's some changes, just to make sure that everybody's aware that, that's in this room or watching livestream. There were some major changes that have been done through the legislature this year, through property tax credits, through taking community colleges off of the property tax rolls and putting them on the, on the state, the state pays for their expenses now.
That will take effect in 2024.
It, you should have amazing benefits for the changes that were made. What we are doing right here today does not, it's, it's not your property tax rate. It is, we are assessing the valuation based on criteria from state statute that we are bound by law to do to bring our properties into a valuation that is equalized fair across the board, not playing favorites or anything else, as a measure of the free market. I understand the frustration. I do. Because yes, property values have gone up year over year and, and it what may seem unfair, but there, it's not willy-nilly. There is a method, there is a method, there are very strict formulas that we have to follow as directed by state statute. And it's, it's our job to get that as fair as possible for absolutely everybody in the county. So I hear your frustration. I do. But when you bought your property for a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars two years ago in 2021 and you're valued at, what is it this year?
Well, it's valued at one forty-one, seven ninety-three. Of that, the land is eighteen thousand, six, eighteen. The property is one twenty-three, one seventy-five for a total of one hundred and forty-one thousand, seven ninety-three. And that was simply raised on a trending. They didn't pick your property out. They went and trended the area. So everyone got that amount of raise.
So...
So what I would like to say is there may be, well, I'm sure there are many people that didn't make a purchase as recent as you. So they may have had their property ten, fifteen, twenty years and the sixteen percent trend may be, may be appropriate to them, okay? Because they may be living in a one hundred and twenty thousand dollar house that, you know, it's been that. But when we find an outlier, which I think yours almost is...
Well, I think that was part of the other thing that I wanted to bring up as I know a house just down the street from us sold for like two hundred, it was astronomical.
Astronomical.
Astronomical. And I was like, so if we're going to base our, where I live off of the sale of one house that just happened, I mean, we're talking, I know inflation. I know, I know the market's changing.
But don't you understand?
So does this ever come down?
But we haven't done that.
In the history of the, of, of the things, do the valuations go down? Or do you just say, hey, one eighty-two, so we're being fair? I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm, I'm genuinely...
But I, but valuation has gone down in the past. Not as oft, not as often as it's gone up.
Since 2009 on my house, when I looked it up, it's happened once.
But it, but it has, like I said, I said it had, not near as often as it goes up because that's the trend we say...
I guess, and this is another part of, of I think worry, is I know people said that, that there's tax breaks coming. So I think some of the frustration, on the other hand, is like, okay, so we know they're coming. So well, we're raising them on the other, on the front end to counteract the...
So, but we can't...
But I don't know. I don't know. So that's what it sounds like.
So my point though, is that would be illegal for us to do that.
I would assume, but I don't know.
Because we, we, I'm telling you, it, it is illegal. We are bound to follow state statute based off of very specific criteria. And we take this job extremely seriously.
One other question then, is when I was looking up what all these were based on, what the formula, whatever that is, it was, I could only find like the four things listed on the website. And they're general things. There's not like a, I couldn't necessarily review my own property and go, okay, I have a general understanding next year of what my valuation will be. Is that something that is public or not?
You're going to be addressing it so...
Please say that.
Repeat that later, please.
So when we, when I went to look to see what the basis, the formula, whatever we're talking about here... we're talking about here, I don't know how you phrased it, I just looked to see, okay, what are they basing the, the valuations on? There was only like four or five things listed, but they're general. So I guess, is, is what you guys use to, to do the valuations listed anywhere? Is that public record? Is that something that, so if I wanted to look next year and go, what, what is the possibility of my valuation next year going up or going down?
Um, there is a whole chapter of statutes, Chapter 77 in the Nebraska State Statute is the book, or I shouldn't say book, we have a book of that, that's about that thick, of all the guidelines and rules and everything that we must follow in the assessment practice. So it is available, Department of Revenue, on the Property Assessment Division tab. You can pull up, like I said, state statutes on the assessment part, and it will give you everything. It's kind of broke down, so if there's something specific, if you want to do real property, personal property, homestead exemption, I mean, there's lots of different things, so, but there is, you know, several, several areas.
I'm wondering if maybe you were looking at like grade, condition, those kinds.
I think that's what I was looking at.
And so would you address that for, please, Henry?
That'd be on the GIS website.
Right.
Yes.
You should be able to find that, if you click on your, have you been on the GIS?
Julie, you've provided us.
Yeah, you should be.
Sumations.
Of that, yeah.
And I believe Tammy, I believe Tammy posted.
I think the four that you're looking at deal with property sales. It deals with condition of the property. It deals with mass assessment. There, there's three or four generalized things, and, and they're, they're, they're surmised into those four broad categories, because to put 70 pages of very detailed state statute onto our county website, it's just not feasible. And generally, people aren't getting into the minutia like that. My recommendation is if you have concerns about where your property may be valued next year, because we have to do this on a regular basis, is that you have that conversation with the county assessor's office. And you go in, you make sure that your property information is correct, as far as square footage, anything that you may have done to the house, if you, if you've changed the condition, that you're having those conversations. And they will literally walk through and punch that information into their system and show you what it should fall out at.
We also keep, you know, sales books for those big neighborhoods. So if you ever want to come in and sit down with the appraiser that was, you know, in that area, they have all the sales in a book form, within that two-year ratio period that we are using to set the car values. They will have those sales available for you to look at, so you can see what they did use, where they are, you know. On the GIS, you can look at them compared to where you were located, to where they are and stuff. So it's all that information, you know, it's all public record. If you ever want to just take the time to come in and sit down, my staff's always there.
Okay. One last comment. Keep in mind the Turk, taxi, the Turk Commission out of Lincoln, it's a state agency overseas.
Tax Equalization Review Commission, in other words, they review our stuff.
They are the petition if you don't agree with our ruling, okay? Most times, Turk is telling us we're too low over the years. This is my fifth process of this. After understanding all the new, you know, the nuances of it, our assessor typically is being criticized from Lincoln because we're not high enough. They're easily telling us sometimes, and that's where these ratios go, that 1.16 adjustment type. Those, that's, that comes from Lincoln. Ultimately, we've had just a handful of people that went to Turk, and most of the time, they don't change. That tells me where, where we should be on valuations. That is a backstop, however. And we take that, as Chris said, very seriously. We welcome anyone to take, go to Turk with, with their concerns if they're not satisfied. But I think the track record proves that we've done, done our due diligence.
Okay. This might be a good time to ask you, ma'am, if you have any thing extra you would like to add that you haven't already. And then we will, then we will go to Commissioner Hugley to make his recommendation.
I mentioned as well a few other issues with the house that I had recently. I've had to replace portions of the roof over the garage since moving in. I don't know what, as far as property and home, what is assessed, so I just have my trees, my front lawn right now from the recent storms. My entire front seat's replaced, and the back deck also needs addressed. All of these things are things that are on a list that's going to take me several years to get to. So, but I didn't bring any, I didn't bring any pictures or anything of that. I think most of my concern was understanding the jump.
Did you, did you, did you go to the referee, Mrs. Trigo?
Yes.
Yes, okay, super. Joe?
First of all, I want to start my apologizing to Ms. Reeves. I raised my voice.
I did too, and I apologize.
No, no reason for that. I appreciate you being here. Most people don't take the time to come in and actually ask the questions. And yet, I'm one of those bureaucratic jerks that raised my voice to you, and I'm truly, truly sorry, and I feel bad about that, okay? Please accept my apology.
I appreciate it, yes.
Okay. And I appreciate you being here. You're not going to appreciate what I have to say, okay? But I do feel bad about that. Based on the conversation we had, I'm going to make a motion, it's motion number three, that I would move to accept the recommendation of both the assessor and referee, which indicates no change at this time, as there's no evidence was presented to warrant a change. And that's what was written on both the referees and the assessor's comments, and that would be my motion.
Second.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Again, please, please accept my apology. Now, you're going to, you're going to like me even more, dislike me after I say this. I deliberately chose to go with the recommendation we have rather than raise it, but I would ask the assessor's office next year to please review this and to make sure that they follow within the.
We're reviewing this outside this year.
That's my question. So, you know, you have additional information, you don't have on all properties, okay? So please make sure that it's appropriately appraised according to state laws. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and again, I'm so sorry for being short.
Sorry.
Did we vote, we voted on one? Protest number 65 from Hassan Boo, property 0007825.00, Banks Subdivision Park Edition East, .7.05. I'm having a real hard time reading his handwriting here. Looks like L, S, and W half of six, 619 West B is the physical address. Protested valuation is $69,600. He is requesting a lower valuation of $60,000. His statement is, this is a rental property, but our rent is low. We just raised our rent last year to cover new tax rise last year. We can't raise the rent again, renters will move out. I understand this town needs money, but we need to live too. This was reviewed by Ashley in the assessor's office, and her determination was no change, insufficient evidence to warrant a change. All SISAV parcels received a 1.16 trended adjustment for falling out of compliance with state ratios. Her recommendation is to leave the land at $5,551, improvements at $64,049, for a total of $69,600. It did go before the referee, and Ms. Trigo agreed with Ashley's recommendation. The information presented by the owner was not sufficient to legitimize a decrease in value. She recommends that we also leave it at $69,600. There were no pictures or additional evidence presented. I am going to go with number three. I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor and the referee, which indicates no change at this time, no evidence was presented to warrant a change.
Second.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Wheeler. Aye.
Mr. Chairman, just as a courtesy, you might ask if the gentleman in the office has one in particular interest, and we'd be glad to take that maybe now. Oh, oh, okay.
See the process?
Just trying to give you the courtesy. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I am going to work on protest number 131. This is property ID of 9210, Mr. Robert Komic, K-O-M-E-C, Bill Subdivision Lot 2, 1821 West 16th Street. He is protesting the valuation of $143,030. He's requesting $107,000, $10,000 of that being land, $97,000 on buildings. Buildings need repairs and has old heating equipment is his reasoning for requests. This did not go to referee. Charity reviewed this, and there was an agreement made that it will be lowered, changed the condition to below normal, gave house 15% functional depreciation for the room, living room, subfloor needed installed, changed garage to below normal condition. So my motion is going to be number seven. After testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation, which will be land at $16,631, improvements $81,535, for a total of $98,166.
What was that decrease?
Decrease total was.
Went from what to what?
$143 to $98. Second, second.
Williams.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Slaughter.
Aye.
Protest number 176, parcel number 0087365. Parcel ID, yes, that's parcel ID. This is a 422 Sandpiper Way, this is a Lake Maloney lot, number 76. Protester, Mr. Jeremy Van Sickle. Protested valuation is an aggregate number of $479,458. He's requesting a reduction to, of the buildings to $429,700. This is, of course, just because the lots are not included, just the improvements of those Lake Maloney properties. Mr. Van Sickle presented a narrative comparing some recent sales and noted price per square feet. Ashley reviewed this, and her comments specifically were, after she reviewed the information and looking at those comparables, she recommended no change because insufficient evidence to warrant the change. Protested property is a newer home that has been rehabbed a few years ago, and the comparable properties are anywhere from 600 to 1,000 square, more square feet than the protested property, two of them with a higher value and all older than this protested property. So therefore, my motion would be number four. Insufficient evidence to have a change at this time. The land, of course, would be at zero, since they don't own it, and the improvements would stay at $479,458.
Second.
Bruns.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Aye.
Just for reference, that was a property that we bought one time at absolute auction, that we found out legally wasn't an absolute auction. We didn't buy it.
You thought you did.
Just for a short time, yikes.
Mr. Chairman, I have protest number 69. This is from Hassan Boo. The property ID number is 2055. Seems odd that there's no decimals. Somebody verify that for me.
I've been going back to the, this page, and it's at the top. His handwriting is a little hard sometimes to read.
7055.00.
.00, okay.
Oh, no.
Real property description is McDonald Place Edition, the north 45 feet of Lot 6, Block 1. The protested valuation for 2023 has land valued at $2,871, improvements at $48,998, for total valuation of $51,869. The protester is requesting total valuation for both land and buildings dropping down to $45,000 flat. Reason for the requested valuation change is this is a rental property, but our rent is, I can't read that. We just rose the rent last year to cover the tax rise last year. We can't raise the rent again, or renters will move out. They understand the town needs money, but they need to live as well. Per my comments with the last property that was protested by this owner, I think I've made my point clear on the differentiation. They did go see the referee. The referee has agreed with the county assessor's recommendation, as the information presented by the owner was not sufficient enough to legitimize a decrease in value, pointing out that this particular property was part of the South Side, and all South Side parcels received a 1.16 trended adjustment for falling out of compliance with state ratios. So it would be my motion number five, that I move to accept the recommendation of both the assessor and the referee, which indicates no change at this time. The evidence presented does not warrant a change.
You said number what?
Five.
I'll second that motion.
Hugley.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bruns.
You know, I have a number of protests from last week that I'd worked, but if, if the chairman would let me indulge, these are three or four protests, all relating to the same properties. It was a large piece of property, broke into different ones, that I think we could go through pretty fast, if, if I could just kind of do them at one time, okay? Protest number 18 is by Brad, and I couldn't even find it on the printed form, because it doesn't show, what is it? Brad Nienhauser, parcel number 0014325.00. It's Aldrin's subdivision lot 3. They're asking that the land be reduced from $8,006 to $423. This property is fenced with five other and being used as one. The recommendation is the assessor was to lower it to $804, as it's combined with other parcels. That would be my motion number seven. Is that, after testimony and evidence presented by the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation?
Second.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Aye. Protest number 19, Brad Nienhauser, PI number 0014330.00, asking to be reduced from $8,006 to $423. The assessor's recommended $804, combining with other lots. Would be mine motion number seven, that after testimony and evidence presented by the assessor, we lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation. we lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. Protest number twenty, Brad Neenhouser. PI number zero-zero-one-four-three-three-five, Aldrin subdivision lot five. They're asking to be reduced from eight thousand six dollars to four-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars. The assessor's recommending eight-hundred-and-four dollars combining the land with other parcels. That would be my motion that after testimony and evidence presented by the assessor, I move to lower the value of the land to the assessor's recommendation of eight-hundred-and-four dollars. Number seven.
Second.
Aye.
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 And number twenty-one, the last of this gentleman's that I have, the Brad Neenhouser. Protest number twenty-one, zero-zero-one-four-three-four-five-point-zero-zero is the PI number. It's Aldrin subdivision lot seven. They're asking the land be reduced from twenty-three thousand three-eighty-eight to five thousand four-hundred-and-sixty-two. The assessor's recommending eleven thousand seven ninety-nine as combining the land with the other parcels that we'd read. So it would be my motion that after hearing testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation, number seven.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you for indulging me. As I say, I've looked at them last week.
Mr. Chairman, I have protest number six-three from Hyzren Boo for property ID zero-zero-one-six-five-two-five-point-zero-zero, Flynn's Edition, nine-seven, seven-eleven East Ninth Street. Protested evaluation is sixty-three thousand two-hundred-and-eighty dollars. He is asking for a reduction to fifty-one thousand three-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars. Statement, rental property, our rent is low. They rose it last year to cover the tax rise last year. Can't rise rent again, renters will move out. I understand town needs money, but we need to live too. It was reviewed by Ashley Gertullo. Her recommendation is to leave the land at ten thousand six-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars. Improvements at fifty-two thousand six-hundred-and-sixteen dollars for a total of sixty-three thousand two-hundred-and-eighty dollars. No change, insufficient evidence to warrant a change. It did go before the referee and Marcia Trigo agreed with the assessor. The information presented by the owner was not sufficient to legitimize a decrease in value. Therefore, we are leaving the aggregate valuation at sixty-three thousand two-hundred-and-eighty dollars. My recommendation is number three. Move, accept the recommendation of the assessor and referee, which indicates no change at this time, no evidence presented to warrant a change.
Second. Aye.
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 Okay, on protest number one-thirty, this is a property ID number of zero-zero-two-six-six-seven-five-point-zero-zero, Adana and Lois Snyder, sixteen-oh-four West Fourteenth Street. Lorenson's second replat, two-one TP. This is, they are protesting the overall valuation of a hundred and fifty thousand six-hundred-and-eight dollars, requesting a hundred and fifteen thousand, ten thousand of that being land, a hundred and five thousand for buildings. Our house is modular, our largest block is well-kept, but many neighboring houses on the same block and pictures are included are vacant, rentals or uncared for. We feel the location warrants a reduction. Charity reviewed this and was in agreement with the owner, changed the grade to five, overall normal condition. So the valuation was lowered, according to charity, and the agreement land at sixteen thousand one thirty-nine. That stays the same, actually. The improvements lowered to a hundred and one thousand fourteen dollars for a total of a hundred and seventeen thousand one fifty-three. This would be after testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation, number seven.
Second.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
I have protest number one-seven-four. Parcel ID is eight-two-seven-three-five-point-zero-zero. Described as Kelly Acres, part of the north half of section four, township thirteen, range thirty-two. And I believe the physical address is nineteen-six-thirty West Oregon Trail Road. The protested valuation is twenty-five thousand dollars for the land, eighteen thousand five seventy-four for the buildings, for a total value of forty-three thousand five seventy-four. Mr. William Friesel petitioned this protest and he requested a valuation of the land to be reduced to ten thousand and the buildings to three thousand for a total of thirteen thousand dollars. His comments are that it's an inaccurate property and land evaluation. Send an estimator for proof, please. Ashley reviewed this and makes note that there was no insufficient evidence. I see pictures that she reviewed of the property. Her comments were that no changes were warranted in her evaluation, insufficient evidence to warrant a change. She would have the land remain at twenty-five thousand dollars, the improvements to eighteen thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars for a total value of forty-three thousand five seventy-four. My motion would be number four.
Second.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I have protest number sixty-four. This is from Hassan Boo. Property ID number is one-eight-three-zero. The real property description is original township, south fifty-three and a half feet, eight-sixty-seven TP. The protest evaluation has landed eleven thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars, improvements at fifty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars for a total valuation of seventy thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars. They are requesting a valuation of everything dropping down to fifty-two thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. The reason for requested valuation change is this is a rental property, but our rent is too high. We just raised our rent last year to cover the tax rise last year. We can't rise the rent again, renters will move out. I understand this town needs money, but we need to live too. They did see a referee on this. Referee's recommendation is the information presented by the owner was not sufficient to legitimize a decrease in value. She recommends the county assessor's recommendation for valuation, seventy thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars. I would move reason number five to accept the recommendation of both the assessor and the referee, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change.
Second to motion.
Aye.
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 Protest number twenty-two, Brian and Marla Seaman. They did not see a referee. The property identification number is eight-seven-eight-two-zero-point-zero-zero. They're asking that the building improvements be reduced from two-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand eight-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars to a hundred and forty-two nine oh one. This is property at Lake Maloney. Says see attached fixtures. Condition of the home needs lots of repairs. I did review all of the photos. It does need repair work. And looking at that as the way other values are occurring around Lake Maloney would be my motion that after testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation as follows. Land is zero, improvements two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven for a total of two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven. Due to the condition, we changed it to fair. Bathrooms were corrected to two full and one-half bath. Giving that a fifteen percent functional depreciation for the second full bath being a non-functional bath. So that would be my motion.
Second.
So I dropped it from what to what, total?
Oh, I'm sorry, it would drop from two-fifty-eight four, two-fifty-eight eight forty-nine to two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand nine thirty-seven. They were requesting a hundred and forty-two thousand nine oh one. And the reason that I made my determination was, I did look at the photos, it does need work. But if you recall, most of the homes, and this home happens to be on South Maloney Drive, I'm very familiar with the location and home. People aren't buying the homes out there. They're buying the lot, they're not buying the lot, but they're paying for the lot and many times just tearing down the cabins there and building a new cabin even though it's a build on leased property. So that was the reason for my motion on the improvements on lease hold interest.
Second.
Aye.
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 I have protest eight-seven, Charles Nichols, thirty-two-twenty Hazen Howard Court, property ID zero-zero-two-zero-zero-zero-six-point-one-zero, Hazen Howard subdivision, south one-half of lot thirty, bank subdivision eleven. He is requesting, let's start with the protested valuation, is eleven thousand twenty dollars on land, a hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred and nine on buildings for a total of a hundred and ninety-three thousand five hundred and twenty-nine. Requested valuation is to lower the land to nine thousand eight hundred and eighty, lower buildings to one-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars for a total of a hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred and eight.
Can you scroll through those photos, please?
There are a lot of photos attached. His reasons are, no properties on Hazen Howard Court have been bought or sold since 2010 to justify the increase. Property directly across from ours is a mess and no one wants to look at it. We live near feet off of Walker Road. Traffic noise makes it impossible to enjoy outside activities. We have made no improvement since purchasing in 2010 other than having a nice-looking yard, road, grass. Please see attached. And Charles did attach many, many pictures of not just his property, but adjoining properties. It was reviewed by Henry, whose assessment was, after speaking with the taxpayer and reviewing information, changed the condition to normal, changed fireplace to limited use, changed bedrooms to three and metal shed to a framed shed. It left the land at eleven thousand twenty dollars, but did lower the assessment on the house to a hundred and sixty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars for a lower valuation of a hundred and seventy-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. It is my determination, number seven. After testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation.
Second.
Aye.
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 Okay, before I start this protest, I'd like to pull the board. How about if we, and Julie, how about if we take a break at noon for an hour? Would that be okay with everyone?
What are you making me stay here?
Yeah, you have to stay here and work on whatever I can find for you. Is that okay? Perfect, I'm glad you're in agreement. Okay, on protest one-one-six, this is property ID number zero-zero-one-nine-five-two-zero-point-zero-zero, Patty and Harlan Miller on twenty-six-oh-six West Twentieth Street, Haluska's replat of Rodeo Edition E, block twenty-four, lot twenty-one. They are protesting the valuation of ninety-eight thousand six hundred and ninety-one dollars, requesting eighty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. Our house is on a dirt street that gets little maintenance and the pictures do verify that the neighborhood across the street is a little less than attractive and such. But reviewed by Henry and Henry's assessment was that no change, insufficient evidence to warrant a change. There were several photos submitted. So the land, so it's going to be my motion that there was evidence presented, the pictures, so I'm going to say I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change, number four. So the valuation will stay the same. Land at nineteen thousand eight hundred and seventeen, buildings at seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars for a total of ninety-eight thousand six hundred and ninety-one.
Mr. Chairman, were there additional comments in the back on the notes section on the last page? Highlighted.
Insufficient evidence to warrant a change.
Okay, and I'll put as part of the blanket, increase.
No.
Second. Second on your motion.
Aye.
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 This is protest number one-six-seven. James and Patricia Dickerson. Parcel ID, property ID is nine-one-zero-zero-two-point-zero-zero. Described as DNR second replat, lot number one of Sutherland. The Dickersons are protesting a value of twenty thousand three twenty on the land, a hundred and thirty-two thousand five seventy-two on the buildings for a total of one-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand eight ninety-two and requesting the land stay at twenty thousand three twenty but reduce the building to a hundred and twenty-two thousand four fifty-six for a total of one forty-three and twenty-six dollars. Mr. Dickerson, the Dickersons indicate condition. Want us to note the condition, no updates have been made. Basement finish isn't, I'm not sure what that abbreviation is, but should be minimal. They did provide some very good pictures of grade and condition of the exterior and some of the degraded floor in the garage and so forth. Ashley reviewed this in conjunction with the petitioners and she actually came into agreement. She changed the condition to normal and changed the basement finish to minimal, which based on the pictures, I certainly wouldn't argue with that. So we have an agreement. So my motion will be number seven to reduce. Although the land will stay at twenty thousand three twenty, the improvements would reduce to one-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand seven oh six for a total of one-hundred-and-forty-three thousand and twenty-six dollars. That is a number seven with evidence presented to the assessor in their review.
Second.
Aye.
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 Mr. Chair.
Oh, what does ITG mean? It's written...
Income to grade.
Thank you very much, thank you.
That was a homestead.
Thank you. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I have protest number sixty-two from Hassan Boo on property ID number two-four-nine-eight-five. Real property description is Leroy's subdivision of lot two and part of lot three of Nelson's Edition, lot one, block one, TP. The protested valuation has landed at ten thousand sixty-three dollars, improvements at eighty-two thousand forty-one dollars for a total valuation of ninety-two thousand one hundred and four dollars. Improvements at $82,41 for a total valuation of $92,104. The requested valuation brings everything down to $79,400. Reason, reasons for the requested valuation change is this is a rental property, but our rent is too high. We just raised the rent last year to cover the tax raise last year. We can't rise the, raise the rent again as the renters will move out. I understand this town needs money, but we need to live too. Did meet with the referee. The assessor is recommending no change, insufficient evidence to warrant a change. All south side parcels received a 1.16 trended adjustment for falling out of compliance with state ratios. After meeting with the referee, they did provide some information, but the referee says that the information presented by the owner was not sufficient to legitimize a decrease in value. Would be my motion, number five, to move to accept the recommendation of both the assessor and the referee, which indicates no change at this time. The evidence presented does not warrant a change. That would have land at $10,063. Improvements at $82,41 for a total valuation of $92,104.
Second to motion.
Hewitt.
Aye.
Lular.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye. Protest number 23, Justin Reifsel. Partial number 0026535.00. Well, it sounds like I've read that number before. Guess not. He's protesting the buildings of $25,512. He's asking for a reduction to 7,000. Total land and buildings from 33,512 to 15,000. Says there's more than doubled since last year after it went up already. It's a old 1971 trailer. And this, something is not right. So I apologize, I should have done it earlier, but he wrote in some incorrect values. Okay, so I'm going to go back and re-read the card. This is strength. No, I'm confused. Julie, bear with me, but what I'm showing, I only have the, a print of the 23 and that's land at 17,390, buildings at 16,132 for a total of 33,512, okay? And that's what's written up in the comments, but the charity is saying no change to the improve, oh, revalued land. I gotta just continue reading, I apologize, because I agreed with the total amount, I just wasn't sure I got there.
What protest number did you read?
Oh, don't, never mind, because I answered my own question. This is, this, they, this is, we revalued the land because we combined it with another partial, so I wondered how she would, she were able to lower it. That answered my own question. I just need to read further, I apologize.
And I think that legal should read lot six, block two, if that's got the improvement on it, because the next one, 72, is vacant land. So that's where I was confused as well. Is that what, what legal did you read?
Let's see, this legal should be, it says a trailer house, no foundation and often carport with no representatives. It's highway eighth edition, 72, and it's a 1 TP, so that's in the town of North Platte, so.
I think it should be 62.
Okay. The other one is a 72 also, so let me look back here on the card. It is a 62 on your cards. Okay, I think you wrote it wrong, yeah. The first one is a 62, so.
Pretty dry.
And the second one's a 72, so the trailer house is on 62?
Mm-hmm.
So do you want to write this in a red or how do we do this? Just to note that that was the incorrect number. That should be a 62. Okay? All right. Starting to make more sense to me now, because I can see where the land is separated. Okay. It would be my motion, number seven, to, after testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation based on the coming, combining the land with 0026540. Period, that's my motion.
Second. Lular.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Hewitt.
Aye. Sorry, it was so long. Sammy, I was going to get it on the right log because it was on the wrong log.
Protest number 59, Hazen Boo. Property ID 0035725.00. Rouse and Turley replat, number two. Physical address, 1821 West Earth Street, I believe. Protested valuation is $75,600. He is requesting a lower valuation to total land and buildings of $65,000. Rental property, our rent is low and we just raised rent last year to cover new tax raise last year. We can't raise the tax rent again or renters will move out. I understand town needs money, but we need to live. It was reviewed by Ashley. It's her recommendation that we leave the land at $11,594. Improvements at $63,806 for a total of $75,400. No change, insufficient evidence to warrant a change. All south side properties received a 1.16 trend adjustment for falling out of compliance with state ratios. It did go before the referee, who also agreed with Ashley's assessment. It is my recommendation for number three. I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor and the referee, which indicates no change at this time. No evidence was presented to warrant a change.
Second.
I, I have a question on that one before we vote. I'm, I'm reading this and I should have paid more attention earlier, but it says this is a rental property, but our rent is low.
No, rent is too high.
Rent is low. L-O-W.
It's too in their handwriting, because I've had it on mine a few different times and it's the same, same statement.
This, but this one is.
This, mine have all said low. L-O-W.
And so if it's too low, that was my question, because I've heard some that it's too high already and he can't raise it again, he's raised it before. But here it says on his written testimony, our rent is low.
All of mine have said that.
So if his rent's low, wouldn't that justify raising it more? And that's his discussion.
The one I, I think the one that I processed, I'm paraphrasing, but he indicated that because he has a leased value, he couldn't change it in mid, mid lease.
That one I heard, and I heard him comment on that.
But I don't know about that one, but.
Yeah, these all say exactly the same thing, but our rent is low.
Yeah, and it's not the same, these aren't the same as on the, in the middle, because he has two different things. This one is that they raised it last year, he's to raise it again, he just says it's low, so. Anyway, I just thought that was interesting, because on McHale's it reads a little bit different than what I've been reading from you guys, so just wanted to bring that up. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. You're good, all right. I said second and aye.
Okay, Williams.
Aye.
Aye.
Hewitt.
Aye.
Lular.
Aye.
I have protest.
Hold on just a minute.
Oh, you're next.
Yeah, I am, I am.
I lost track.
Okay. Protest number 114. This is for Mr. Gerald Coleman, property ID of 0028540.00. This is miles acres, east 94.27 feet of the south, 182 feet of block seven, 2801 West A Street here in North Platte. They are protesting the valuation of $84,400, requesting $75,668. Needs extensive repairs, see attached pictures, and that is exactly true. There is tremendous amount of repairs that are needed on this. Charity reviewed this and made the comment that receive photos with protest, condition, condition issues are still present from the 2022 protests. Repriced the house using the updated cost tables. Changed condition to fair. So this valuation is going to be lowered as per charity and the agreement based on the evidence presented. That would be, I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no, oh, excuse me, wrong, wrong, excuse me. I was on the wrong. After testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation, number seven. That recommendation would be land at $24,953. Improvements at $51,738 for a total of $76,691, being dropped from $84,000. So that is my recommendation, number seven.
Second.
Williams.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Hewitt.
Aye.
Lular.
Aye.
Protest number 169, Mr. Randy Kittleman. This is on ID number 0040215.00. Described as lot three of Stone's replat, a part of the lot eight. And the build subdivision, North Platte. Mr. Kittleman is protesting aggregate land and improvements of $13,505 in request of aggregate value of $5,052, commenting that no one lives there and is unlivable and hasn't had electric gas in four years. And his last comment is, you need to look at property better. Actually did look at this property, took into consideration, did a walk around, and she concurred with Mr. Kittleman that this is, in fact, unlivable. So she reduced, while she didn't change, recommend changing the real estate value at 7,615, which it is today, she did in fact essentially degrade the mobile home to $785 for a total value of $8,400. So since she did an inspection review by the assessor, I, my motion would be number eight to approve the reduction.
Second.
So what was, what did she reduce?
The land.
The land?
Mobile home.
Well, I, I get that, because it's on leased land, right? Because it's a mobile home.
No, it's the land, they own the land, apparently.
So if she re, I, I just misunderstood you. I, I heard you say that, but then I thought you said that I misunderstood. So she did take it off the mobile home?
Right.
Yeah.
And so what's the, what's the 8,000 left for?
About 7,000, that is for the land.
7,615 is the land, 8,000, 785 is.
Sure, thank you.
Is the old dilapidated.
I just, I heard you wrong. Thank you, Kent.
Dilapidated mobile home.
Absolutely.
For a total of $8,400.
Burns.
Aye.
Hewitt.
Aye.
Lular.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Chris, would you like to take the last one before mine?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I have protest number 61. This is for Hassan Boo. Property ID number 44845. The real property description is Town Lots Company, block, or lot 12, block 29, TP. The protested valuation has landed $7,650. Improvements at $57,930 for a total valuation of $65,680. The requested valuation brings the total for land and buildings down to $56,535. Reason for the requested change, summarizing it, they state that it's a rental property. They just increased their rent last year to cover tax raise last year. They're concerned that if they do it again this year, the renters will move out. They understand that the town needs money, but they also need to live as well. This did go to a referee. The county assessor is recommending no change, insufficient evidence to warrant a change. All south side parcels received a 1.16 trended adjustment for falling out of compliance with state ratios. The referee agrees, the information that was presented during their meeting was not sufficient to legitimize a decrease in value. They recommend the assessor's valuation of $7,650 for land, buildings at $57,930 for total valuation of land and buildings at $65,680. It would be my motion, reason number five, to move to accept the recommendation of both the assessor and the referee, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change.
Second.
Hewitt.
Aye.
Lular.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Okay, great. Tell you what, we're going to take, and Melissa, you've been so good this morning, we'll allow you to take the hour off too. You're welcome.
Are we meeting it? Good luck on the break.
No, we can't.
There you go.
Okay, so at 11:59, we will take a break.
Recession.
Recession and start up around 1:00.